The time is now 5:30. I'd like to call this school board work session to order. It is February 19th. The school board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we reside on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission statement is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson is excused. Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Minor.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy, and thanks, Board, for the continued conversation this evening. Just setting the stage today, we'll talk a bit more about school closures. We'll talk specifically justifications for going into the schools that are on the shortlist. We'll also cover activities this evening and talk about middle and high school activities and how that impacts our budget. And we'll have a short conversation on ELP programming as that was -- we had some questions from the board about ELP. And so that's what we will cover in tonight's work session. So we'll start with school closure. We will be working off of the school closure working document that was uploaded to the board packet. It's my understanding that some of the links aren't working at the beginning of that document. So, Board members, I just emailed you the chart or table that is on page 17 that starts the new section of that working document. You can see many of the documents that the administration used for consolidating down into this shortlist of schools that's before you this evening. And we'll work on getting that board packet updated so that links work for the public as well. Want everybody to have the same access that the board has. And so Assistant Superintendent Gillum and Assistant Superintendent LaPlante will go over schools and the recommendations that we have for schools to close this year. We also have Ryan Hinton with us to answer some transportation questions. As we know, that's a big part of the consideration for school closures. I would say tonight for the transportation part, if we can keep it at a pretty high level. And then next work session, we plan to have Ryan dig deeper into the redistricting and he can show you the software that we use to handle that. And so if you start getting into, like, specific neighborhood questions, that would be best saved for next week's work session. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gillum to talk about the recommendation for Ben Ileson.
Thank you. Yes, so I'll reference information for Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High School. There is one link if you got the emailed document, but it's also an appendix at the end of the document, too. So if you scroll to the bottom related to -- or to the appendix, the school programming considerations. So the first consideration for Ben Ileson in terms of proposing it for a school closure was the school utilization. Currently, there's only 200 students in the junior high school and 163 students in the high school, which puts its current capacity at 59 percent. There's also been throughout this year that I've experienced, but I believe in previous years, some staffing issues with Ben Ileson in terms of its location. There's many staff currently employed at the school that are non-tenured. And then we also have six district-sponsored emergency certifications at Ben Ileson. Its location makes it unique, too, in terms of we do have some potential applicants who have difficulty gaining access to the military installation. Specifically, the greatest consideration when placing Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High on this list, though, was its educational programming. It has been limited in the educational offerings that it can provide to students. Speaking specifically in the core courses, there are almost twice as many core courses available at North Pole High School versus Ben Ileson Senior High School. And in the elective courses, there's more than twice as many courses available at North Pole High School versus the Ben Ileson Senior High School. In terms of the middle school, the availability of courses is more comparable, but just because of the limited courses that most middle school students take, there are a few more elective courses and a few more core courses offered there. Additionally, in terms of activities, while at the middle school and the junior high, the activities are very comparable, at the high school, there's more consistent enrollment in the activities, which makes it just more consistent for what's offered to students. There's many activities where Ben Ileson will co-op with North Pole when they don't have enough students. So that's also been taken into consideration. As far as neighborhood impacts and geographical location, if Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High School were to close, all of those students would transition to North Pole Middle and North Pole High. There is an option potentially for sixth grade students that are currently at Anderson Crawford to stay there potentially for the next year. Also, in terms of those considerations, 87 students out of 363, or 24 percent of those students, live in the North Pole School's attendance area. In shifting students, North Pole Middle capacity would shift from 69 percent currently to 94 percent with the additional students. And North Pole High's capacity shifts would go from 58 percent to 75 percent. In terms of cost savings, I believe Dr. Minor will speak a little bit more to hold harmless later, but the potential cost savings are approximately 2.3 million with the hold harmless and then 1.5 million without the hold harmless. Another consideration was that Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High School does have very high year-to-year utility costs. Oh, one other point in the educational pathways when I discuss the elective courses, one significant piece of that is just in the career and technical education areas. North Pole High has five. And this is in the -- if you go to the appendix, the educational programming information. North Pole High already has five established CTE pathways with more that they're working on right now, which would be a great benefit to the Ben Ileson Junior/Senior High School. We've already been working this year to try and increase availability of those courses. So that would be an option for them. One other piece of information is just at this point, the administration is not recommending any other middle schools or high schools for closures. In terms of middle schools, there just isn't availability to increase their enrollment due to they're already very high in terms of capacity. Randy Smith Middle School is at 96 percent, Tananaugh is at 90 percent, and Ryan is at 80 percent capacity. We have heard from some people in the community regarding closing Hutchison High School as a school of choice and possibly transitioning what it offers. That is a topic that has come up in the CTE Advisory Committee to work to re-envision Hutch that we will be actively working on. However, we want community input into that because that's a big shift potentially for our community, and we believe that restructuring Hutchison High School would be a longer process than simply a school closure.
I did want to provide some quick information on the hold harmless clause. So you will see the two numbers under each school. For those that don't know, hold harmless is a provision through the Department of Education that the district can take advantage of when student populations decline or we close schools. And so the last time the board went through this process, the school district was under a different provision of hold harmless, and so we were not able to take advantage of the hold harmless provision that's attached to school closure. This go-around, we would be able to fall under those provisions, and you can see what the cost savings would be for the first two years. After that, it reduces down to 66 percent in the third year, 33 percent in the fourth year, and then the fifth year, we would be at roughly that $1.5 million number for Ben Ileson. And so I wanted the board to be aware, for FY '25, you would see the realized savings of approximately $2.3 million.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to talk about Tikusik Brown Elementary School first, and then will we go into the other schools as well, or do you want me to? Okay, all right. So the building condition and the neighborhood and geographical location of the schools is a primary thing for why we would choose any of the elementary schools that we put forward. And for Tikusik Brown specifically, it has -- it's in an area where we would geographically be able to move the students to other reasonable schools that have the capacity to accept them. So specifically, they could move -- we could move a number of the Tikusik Brown students to Arctic Light Elementary School, which is also a benefit because Tikusik is currently a Title I school and Arctic Light is also a Title I school. So when we talk about whether or not we would be changing the services associated with the Title I school, a lot of those students would continue to receive that at the school. And 23 percent of the students at Tikusik Brown are military-connected, and Arctic Light is nearly 100 percent military-connected. So we'd have students, again, moving to a population that they would be familiar with. Currently, as far as the building condition, it has 13.9 million of deferred maintenance. Of those things, there are some listed items here, but I know specifically that the water has been an issue and the parking lot has been an issue. And those are just a few of the things that are listed as far as the deferred maintenance. I think it's important to just share that the deferred maintenance is not anything that the building principal has power over. So these are things that, you know, happen over time as the district had to make difficult decisions for years. So that's where we get to deferred maintenance. The educational programming that is available at Tikusik Brown would be able to be offered at pretty much every elementary school that we have. So as far as special education services, specials like PE, music, library, speech therapy, all of those things would be available at any of the other schools that we would shift students to. And in fact, every time we consolidate the students, we actually make it easier to staff for some of those hard-to-find positions and maybe make our -- providing the services I already mentioned that families impacted by the closure of Title I school in this case, they would -- probably a lot of them would be able to go to a Title I school at Arctic For school unification/utilization, Tikusik Brown's currently at 68 percent utilization and Arctic Light, Midnight Sun, and North Pole Elementary School would be the schools that would be impacted with boundary changes. And each of those schools has, I think, a capacity to receive those students. I don't remember the exact numbers. It's on another page. But, you know, about 60 percent, I think, for Midnight Sun and for North Pole. So those schools definitely have room. As far as the fifth graders that would move on to sixth grade, many of those would probably go to Ryan Middle School. So we would push more of those students in towards Ryan and Lathrop as opposed to North Pole Elementary -- or North Pole Middle School and North Pole High School. And that actually helps balance out the North Pole Middle School and Ryan. It helps add population to Ryan, which is something that needs to happen. One thing that I would like to mention is that we understand that names are important for schools. And with Tikusik Brown, which is actually Emily Ivanoff Tikusik Brown Elementary School, we recognize the honor of being gifted that name as a school district for one of our schools, and we would want to work to continue to have that honor associated with our school district in an appropriate way.
I'll have Kate continue on. So those are the two schools that administration is recommending for closure. We also thought it was important to have two additional schools for the board to consider if they felt like one of the two that we're recommending wasn't one that they would want to go with.
Ms. Minor, or not Ms. Minor, Ms. Marotti, too many Ms.'s. We're going to move on real fast. Okay, so in regards to the students at Tikusik Brown potentially moving to Arctic Light Elementary, would the non-military-connected students move to Arctic Light Elementary? And if so, are there already students at Arctic Light Elementary that are non-military-connected?
Go ahead.
So, yes, there are students at Arctic Light that are non-military-connected. Probably, they're mostly there because their parents work there. Although, we definitely have non-military students attending Anderson Crawford on base, and so that's not a problem for us to work with the military installations to have non-military-connected students attend a military-based located school. And whether or not that would happen is based on what Ryan would be working on with the attendance area zoning.
I can call on myself. It's been a long month. To that follow-up there, when we have students attending or electing to attend Ileson, generally they have some kind of military connection, but we might be having students go to Arctic Light, that it's not a choice or a preference, they're not choosing that. How does that impact the family's ability to access post, attend parent-teacher conferences, go to school activities? As a military person myself, I know there's a lot.
So for Anderson Crawford, we have students that are there because their parents work on base, and that's something that they're allowed to do. We also have students that are from the Salcha area that go there as their attendance area school, and they're not going there because their parents work on base. So we actually have both.
So it's fairly easy. We have a process, then, to help families that might be being put in that attendance area have full access to posts as far as getting to their children's activities.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Peterson?
So I spent the afternoon, or at least part of the afternoon, out at Tikusik Brown, and they had parent-teacher conferences. And one of the comments that I heard from teachers and parents as I walked the halls is that piece of information about how non-military families are going to be able to access Arctic Light if that's where their child is placed is not clear to them yet. And I know we're early in the process, but they feel that, you know, having to stop at the visitor center each and every time they want to visit for parent-teacher conferences, attend evening events is going to be a barrier. So it may be, although early in the process, to help families understand that there's a process to allow them greater access than they may realize.
Thank you for sharing that information, and thank you for being at Tikusik today. I'll go on and talk about Two Rivers and Pearl Creek, if that's the appropriate thing to do now. Okay. So two additional elementary schools that we are putting out for consideration are Two Rivers K-8 School out in the Two Rivers community. It has about $10.10 million of deferred maintenance, and it's actually a very high per-square-foot cost per student to -- it's a high-cost school to run per-square-foot per student and is currently at 66 percent capacity. We -- it could serve 98 students, and it's currently serving 65 students. If the building were closed, the students K-5 would go to Weller Elementary School, and students seventh and eighth would go to North Pole Middle School, where there's already bus services provided. So it's not additional busing to do that component. Like the other elementary schools, the educational impacts would be minimal, in fact, maybe even improved because, again, we'd be consolidating services and maybe have staffing issues somewhat resolved. And staffing has been a historic, you know, difficulty for Two Rivers. It's also been a struggle sometimes with Salcha. They sometimes share positions. We've tried lots of different configurations over the years to try to staff positions like PE teachers, music teachers, counselors, nurses, librarians, and sometimes even a classroom teacher. So right now, they are currently well-staffed, and that's, you know, to be commended, but it has not always been that easy, and there's definitely been difficulty there. They -- the cost savings for the hold harmless would be $1,091,650, and without the hold harmless would be 71 -- 7 -- I'll let you read it. I don't do the numbers.
$711,650 without hold harmless.
Yeah, thank you. So for Pearl Creek and both of these schools, one of the high -- the reasons that they would be picked, again, is the geographic location and the building maintenance issue. So where the building is in the deferred maintenance and the cost of repairing the building. So Two Rivers, there's other schools that can take those students. Pearl Creek, there's a deferred maintenance cost of $16.10 million. So that's one of the most costly buildings to try to maintain and get up to where it would need to be. And students could go to U Park, Wood River, and Anne Ween, which would help greater utilize those schools. Again, educational programming would be minimally impacted and perhaps even improved. I think that's it.
Mr. Doran?
Looking at Two Rivers at the moment, I'm not quite sure offhand how many sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. But if North Pole Middle was at 94 percent with the Ileson middle schoolers moving over, what percentage would that move?
North Pole Middle, so I believe there's 23 students in sixth, seventh, and eighth at Two Rivers, in that range. North Pole Middle would certainly have room for those students and the students from Ileson moving over. And I believe we have the capacity count on one of our sheets. Let's come -- they would move to 94 percent capacity.
Right, that's with the Ben Ileson students. So adding another 23.
That's also including the Two Rivers as well.
That includes both. Like to go back to the -- if I might, and then you can put me back in the key. On the Ben Ileson, several years ago, we -- there was a major Ben Ileson base study as they were ramping up for the F-35s. And I understand that there is some other, I think, heavy equipment or -- I'm not sure the name of the unit, but other things that are -- have been mentioned in the last year or two coming to Ileson. Where -- what's our update on the Ileson growth and manpower?
I mean, I think the update is, we've been hearing historically, that Ileson is going to continue to grow, and what we've seen is it continues to decline in student enrollment. So even with additional personnel that are coming to the base, that we haven't seen realized student enrollment increases. And so that's why the recommended -- part of the reason for the recommendation coming forward is the continued reduction of student enrollment in Ben Ileson High School. Also with the knowledge that North Pole High School has a considerable amount of capacity, even if the Ileson area were to grow, they could continue to absorb into North Pole High.
Any follow-up?
Go ahead.
The percentage is given for the high school are reasonable. I think it puts them around 75 percent there, so they have room for growth. My concern is with the middle school being at 94, 95 percent, there's not as much room for growth, and it's problematic with all our middle schools that they are so high, except Ryan is a little bit lower, but the others are those 90, mid-90 percent. So we don't have a lot of growth there, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, certainly not a lot of growth, but I think it would be a good problem to have it for some reason. We projected and started going upwards in terms of our student enrollment. I think there's other possibilities we could consider at that point in time if that occurs. But historically, that hasn't been the trend in the last five or 10 years. And so isn't part of the consideration right now with the reduction in student enrollment, both at Ben Ileson and overall in the district.
Thank you, President Hardy. Just out of curiosity, first off, I think Pearl Creek needs to be removed from consideration. But mainly, we have -- the board received an email earlier. It's going to get a new access road and parking lot and head bolt heaters and such. Is that happening?
It is scheduled to happen this summer if they're not -- if the board doesn't take action on closure, so that is correct. Unfortunately, you know, with that access road, it takes you to a facility that has major facility issues, and so that's why Pearl Creek finds itself on the shortlist for recommendation from the administration, given the high amount of deferred maintenance and issues with that facility.
Mr. Burgess?
I have several questions, but I'll start with just one. And, well, I'll start, actually, with more of a comment. Going off of what Mr. Doran said with regards to potential closure of Two Rivers Elementary or K-8, right? Because I -- the table that I see on page 20 of the document appears to only include the closure of Tikusik Brown and Ben Ileson. And if we are including -- well, what I'd like to see, actually, is, like, this is a great table. I really appreciate that, having this capacity, these capacity numbers laid out. I would like to see it include every school, because I feel like I don't see Ryan on here, for example. But I'm also interested in multiple versions potentially of this table that clearly show, you know, scenario if we close two schools, scenario if we close three schools, and so forth, and which schools. So I think that would be helpful to, you know, add that to the -- that information. And then, I guess, building off of that, I have a question about how capacity is determined and what it means. Because I know that even if -- even for some of these schools that aren't necessarily close to 100 percent capacity, that the space tends to be utilized in one way or another. So just, yeah, the question, how capacity is determined and what it means on a practical level.
Yeah, so I'll jump in to get to your point in terms of the table and seeing different scenarios. That's what we'll go into next week. So Ryan will be able to show us different scenarios for different schools combined and what that does with the student enrollments at those schools, down to the particular geographic neighborhoods that are linked with those amount of students. And the great thing about his software is that's in real time. So some of the numbers that we've referenced are from October counts. The data that Ryan will be showing you next week is in real time. In terms of utilization of buildings, it is often said that a good utilization of a building is in that 90 to 95 percent capacity range. And so we're in that range with a lot of our middle schools. Principals do have the flexibility to utilize buildings, you know, in the way that they see fit in conjunction with their staffs in terms of utilizing all of the classrooms that are in that building. Would it become tighter for North Pole Middle? Absolutely, it would be, you know, with additional students. But you can also see some benefits with that, too, in terms of the number of electives that are potentially offered and the different availability and sections that are offered. And so we're confident that the facility could handle that increase in growth. But you would definitely notice more students in that building than years past.
Follow-up. Can you walk through, I mean, so, you know, it says deed capacity. So is -- does deed set the numbers for -- or how do you determine how many students fit in a building specifically?
Jake, could you speak to that in more detail?
So, yes, deed, they -- they're the ones that decide the capacity based on the square footage of the building. Per classroom, I believe it's 20 square feet per student, and so they're the ones that determine how many students can be in the school total.
Okay, so it's just based on square footage?
It's based on square footage.
Not necessarily classroom orientation or specific size of educational space?
So depending on the size of the classroom. So if you're looking at an 800-square-foot-sized classroom, so you're So if you're looking at an 800 square foot sized classroom, so you're going to have to calculate, you know, how many per student you can put in that classroom. The way that deed does it, it's based on the full square footage of the entire school, and then they base that number of students that can be in that building.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
And one, one additional point, and I want to keep coming back to this, because I see it pretty regularly in some of the emails that we're getting, is that school closure doesn't mean that we're adding more students to every classroom. And so every, PTR, our people-to-teacher ratio, is what determines potentially the number of students we would have in every classroom. School closure doesn't automatically add students to classes. By taking school closure, by taking action on school closure, hopefully we're keeping PTR down and not adding additional students to every classroom.
Mr. Burgess?
So since you brought it up, you read my mind, Luke. I mean, Dr. Minor, the, but because, but I do have a question, because at some point, you know, just mathematically thinking, you know, you reduce the total amount of space that you have. So where, where does it come, where is that breaking point when closing another school must affect PTR? If you follow, or am I?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we've gotten far enough down the path to see where that breaking point is, given how much capacity we have in our schools. And so we could potentially model that and bring that to the board. But given the number of schools that are drastically under capacity of what that they could handle, we're definitely not at that point.
Mr. Doran?
Okay, I'll stay on the PTR for a minute, in terms of impacts. If we have 30 or more students per class, you're using potentially less classrooms. The capacity by the deed formula, I know it still says whatever num, total number you have in there, not in the space where they might be contained. So my question in terms of the PTR impact is if we're able to maintain PTR, what we have this year, that means potentially more teachers in the cla, in the school, more classrooms being used. Where is the, the conversation in terms of that? And I know it's related, and a related question to it, so you can address it all, is when we have district-wide programs, particularly when I look at TIC, they have, what, four or five district-wide programs, which are fewer students in the same size, in a, fewer students per class, those move into another building. Where is the room there? So kind of melding those two things, perhaps.
I might take a stab at this, and then I might turn it over to the assistant superintendents for follow-up. You know, I think part of, we, especially at the secondary level, I think of schools that I've seen in the past, specifically in the Lower 48, even the school that I attended, where teachers oftentimes were on carts. They didn't have a dedicated room for them. And, and that's not something that Fairbanks has really had to do to, to a large degree. Certainly, I think it's happened over time. But that's, that's one way that you could potentially get at those space constraints, is that some teachers might have to teach off of a cart or travel to another room for a specific time period if, for some reason, we got to the point where we were constrained with the number of classrooms. So there's some flexibility there. Anything else for consideration?
Sure. Currently, you know, in a lot of our elementary schools, we'll have an entire classroom that's being shared by a group of tutors or different programs kind of using that space. Or if there's an empty room, it'll get turned into, you know, an art area or something. Those types of uses of spaces would probably have to be less, right? So you would have to prioritize the classroom teachers. You would probably prioritize your special district-wide programs, our special education classes. And then we would prioritize from there. But not, you know, a counselor sometimes doesn't need a whole classroom. Maybe they would be absolutely perfect with a smaller office and going into the classroom to do their, their lessons. So schools would have to make those types of adjustments. I've, you know, been at a school where, you know, we grew and we had to, you know, use every single room, and then we shrunk and we had more space, and then we grew again. You know, so it's, it goes back and forth.
Follow-up? Mr. Doran?
Okay. I will tell you that I, my thoughts are piqued when you talk about teachers on carts. And I know we have immediate issues, and we have the long term, and I want to be real careful. I mean, this is one of the major reasons where I am concerned with middle schools, that they are as close to full as they are. We have had schools across the board that have been over 100 percent capacity, and teachers were on carts, particularly at the middle school, that brought a lot of concern from the community, that, that that was the situation. We can do it, but that also led us to a building school. So I, I want to, I'm just trying to look down that line. We can solve it in the short term, and we have, and buildings use, use whatever space is available. And I, and I just want to say, because I think that's also important for the public, is that one of the things we've seen in the recent years is because of the lower student population in individual buildings, even using the space for tutors to spread out, there were empty rooms. And so, you know, it, it points out that, yes, we need to, to look at this, and this has to be on the table, so.
I have some, if I don't see anyone else. So going back to Two Rivers, if the students were to move to Weller, I know Two River, or Weller is at a higher capacity than most other elementary schools. Would that displace any current Weller students? And then if they're, oh, Mr. Lopez?
Oh, thank you. Could I get some clarification? So it's kind of out there, but if the borough doesn't raise the tax cap and we don't get the money we're expected currently, will we have to close more schools after we've already had closed schools? Or is that the timeline before that, before we actually make the school closure announcement?
So a lot in the, that question, and I want to be careful how I answer this. So in our proposed budget, we're, in my proposed budget, I've asked for 59 million from the borough. That's baked into the current budget that we see before us, and that includes the closure of two schools. If for some reason the borough didn't come through with that 9 million or potentially 10 million, then additional cuts would be on the table. And so, so I'd like to keep it there for now. We do need to be careful in terms of how we talk about the special election. We can provide facts going into it, but have to be careful not to advocate one way or the other. But certainly additional cuts would be on the table if we didn't have funding to that $59 million, $59 million level from the borough, or additional funding from the state, which we're still really hoping for as well.
Do you happen to have the date for that? I do apologize for the special election.
May 7th.
May 7th? So that's after the school closure vote originally?
It is.
Thank you.
And to kind of clarify for the public, as both a government entity and then as elected officials, now that the special election is an official ballot measure, we are precluded from advocating one way or another without filing forms and different things with APOC. So you will hear us and assembly members give you that message, that now that that is on the ballot, we are not going to advocate one way or another. What we can say is that we do know the borough has some funds this year that they weren't expecting. And so at least for the discussions of this budget, we can assume a $10 million contribution to, for a total of 60 million from the borough, and we feel reasonably sure that that will come through.
Mr. Doran?
Couple of questions on the Ileson situation. We mentioned the possibility of the current fifth graders at Anderson Crawford being able to stay as sixth graders there. Given their building capacity, they're well under, is it a possibility that they could be a K-6 school into the future? Which I'm just thinking that, you know, one of the issues for Ileson has been, you know, older kids helping younger kids and those types of things, getting to do childcare and, and that. But so, we, we used to have, North Pole has actually gone K-5, K-6, K-5, K-6, K-5. But being that Anderson Crawford is somewhat of a special community, is that an option? And then I have another Ileson question.
And just to clarify, K-6, like, that's what you're talking about?
Right.
Long-term? Yeah. I mean, that's part of our recommendation, is that for year one, we would see what the interest level is like for parents and guardians wanting for their current fifth graders to stay at Anderson Crawford for another year. And if we've, if we see that there's a lot of interest in that, then it would be my recommendation to continue that forward in the future. If for some reason, you know, only a handful of families chose that option, and we're seeing that really, you know, those sixth graders want to go to the middle school level, they want more of that middle school experience, then, you know, for future budget cycles, we might take a look at that sixth grade classroom and, and make different choices around it.
Okay. Is it a follow-up?
It's, it's a separate Ileson question.
I'm going to go to Ms. Maple, and then back to you.
Mine's just a clarification, for the sake of clarification. As elected officials were precluded from discussing the election outside of the basic facts, does that, so that does not preclude, say, Mr. Lopez or a staff member of the school? It's just within this setting, we can't discuss that with Mr. Lopez.
It's about using government resources to advocate, and I am not a lawyer. So we are getting a thing from Borough Attorney Jill Dolan, and I'm also hoping to reach out to APOC's advisory board to get real clear specifications. You cannot use government resources to advocate for ballot measures. This is a government meeting, so we all need to not. In your own private time, people are allowed to do as they choose, elected officials. We have a much harder time taking off that elected official hat. So I would urge extra caution if you are an elected official.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Doran?
And if I might, just with that, I, I go back to Ms. Hardy's comment, that actually the, the election and the contribution from local are actually separate issues, and we probably should just avoid any conversation, reference to the election. Question is two-part, in terms of, are there additional military monies that come, I don't say specifically to Ileson, because we have a secondary school there? Does that jeopardize any funding? I've, I've heard, but I don't know how fact-based it is. So does it impact either the federal impact aid or any additional monies that are coming in because we have a school on base?
It does not.
And if I might?
Go ahead.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about the attractiveness for the, in this case, particularly the, the Air Force? We had, when they did that Ileson study, and the, the decision was to actually keep Ileson open, and then the study, and the F-35s coming and additional. We saw minimum, a range of students that, yes, some more students to be coming. We, the study showed that we would have plenty of space for them, so didn't need a new school out at North Pole area. Did not eventuate, and of course, pandemic, and there were holds on deployments and transfers and all of that type of thing. So my question comes to, in terms of attractiveness, that might attract families of airpersons that would say, yes, this is a good place to come. Ileson is a good place, Fairbanks is a good place to come. So could you talk a little bit about that attractiveness piece?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I do think that's a real thing. There's been a couple of studies within the last 10 years that have showed kind of unfavorable results of Ileson schools. And so I do think this is a way to show the robustness of education here in Fairbanks, and specifically in the North Pole area, that Ileson students and families would be able to take advantage of. Ms. Gillum went over, at a pretty high level, the differences in terms of course availability and activities, but I think that'll go a long way as families are looking to potentially relocate up here. Having a robust offering of upper division classes, North Pole is becoming, not becoming, they are a premier career and technical education school, and so it's really impressive seeing the different offerings in that capacity. And then, of course, just on the activity side, seeing the different things that students would be able to be engaged in. And so I think all of that together lends itself to a really strong offering for families that would potentially want to relocate to this effort, and hopefully would improve that rating for the base, the base's education and future reports.
Mr. Doran?
Follow-up. Thank you for that, because I think it is important. The enrollment for the high school has gone down, but I'm mindful of visiting when Secretary of Education at the time, Betsy DeVos, came and we went out there. And part of the commentary from parents, especially at that point, was the robust offerings that Ileson was able to offer at that time. Now, this is, what, five or six years later? It was, and enrollment has gone down, offerings have gone down, and I know that's been a, a concern and an issue. So as we, as we factor that, and I appreciate that. And I appreciated that chart that's there, the course offerings.
Thank you. Ms. Maratti?
Two questions. The first one is, I didn't see Ben Ileson Junior High School's deferred maintenance costs right now. If anyone has that information, that would be great. And then I'm wondering if Ben Ileson Junior High School, I don't think, just correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have like a Title I standing because they're a junior high school, so they wouldn't be considered? If that's wrong, please correct me. And then Pearl Creek, are they Title I or not?
Pearl Creek is not Title I, Ileson is not Title I, and does anybody on my team have the deferred maintenance costs for Ileson?
So it's 15.1 million.
Kind of sticking with the Ileson topic. If Anderson Crawford and Ben Ileson Junior High students, if they wanted to have a K-8 model and be able to do some kind of combined classes like we have at LAD or other places, is that something that the administration? When I went out to closures, at that meeting, a lot of parents, for the same reason we let LAD keep that, were saying, we don't want another school, we're only here through this. It seems like it has capacity within Anderson Crawford to maybe give them that small school environment for keeping six. Could we do K-8?
I feel a little uncomfortable answering that question at tonight's meeting, but we can certainly bring that back to next week's meeting. Prior to Friday, we were limited in the kind of conversations we could have with folks in terms of really scoping this out. And so we can bring additional information back on the consideration of Anderson Crawford being a K-8, and looking at facilities, whether or not they could house that within their footprint, and what the educational programming would be. And so we'll, we'll dig into that this week, and I could bring that back for next Monday's work session.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
And if that's going to take place, I would be interested in hearing some additional information on sped services for a K-8 Anderson Crawford, because I believe right now they're cross-categorical. now they're cross categorical.
Mr. Doran.
As mentioned, that sixth graders from TIC would, or fifth graders from TIC would move on to possibly Ryan as sixth graders. I know I've heard a number of people comment that there are North Pole students who have connect families, they're in North Pole, they connect to North Pole more than Fairbanks, except possibly for shopping or going to the airport. But that those might go to North Pole Middle?
A few neighborhoods potentially, so for the students that would push into Arctic Light, there's some students then that would continue on to Ryan and Lathrop. And we can give you those, show you those specific neighborhoods that we were thinking of next week in terms of impacted neighborhoods and locations for that.
Ms. Burnett.
Excuse me, sorry. Just back to, I was kind of digging into these worksheets. Have we spoken with the military Colonel Alvarado and the leaders there? What have those conversations been like and what is their feedback on closing Ben Ileson?
Yes, ma'am. I would hate to speak for the Colonels, and so I think at some point in time it'd be important to hear directly from them. But I think I can summarize in terms of my conversations with Colonel Alvarado, that he was not surprised by this coming forward, but obviously disappointed, as everybody is in terms of talking about school closure. But he understands that there's issues with adequate funding for schools in the district and also understands that North Pole High School certainly has a lot of options for students. I am going out to Ileson to meet with Colonel Townsend tomorrow, the wing commander, to have some additional conversations with him and some other leadership personnel on Ileson to continue the conversations of what this might look like and co-messaging around the conversations we're having.
Not seeing anyone, so I'll jump back in. And this is to Ms. Hall, not to put you on the spot, and it's okay if you need more time. So we've heard a lot about how school closures would benefit special education and sped services in general, and I was hoping maybe you could expound and give a better idea of how that works.
So a couple of things have been mentioned about district wide classrooms, and there's different types of district wide classrooms at different types of schools, so not everything is transferable to every building, but essentially unlike PTR with general education classrooms where you have, I'm going to take a wild stab, that may be a ridiculous number, fifteen general ed teachers in a building, you might have one or two special ed teachers in a building. And so the way that that transfers to be able to average out students is obviously much smaller. So where we have vacancies, being able to kind of consolidate that staff is helpful. With district wide programs, we have suffered from vacancies in paraprofessionals throughout the year. And I can't say that we could absolutely consolidate all of the district wide programs from a closed school into existing schools. Again, it's going to depend some on geography and that sort of thing, but if we're able to consolidate some of those, it helps with overall coverage. And then I would say the biggest impact is with our itinerant staff, like school psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and to some degree, speech pathologists that are working across multiple schools. If you're reducing the number of campuses that they need to travel to, that fundamentally, I mean, it's in, it's in, it's on the margins, it's tiny percentages of time, but if you're not spending thirty minutes of your day driving, you're spending that thirty minutes of your day with students, that's obviously an important, an important, better use of your time. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Doran.
Question that has come up is in terms of, actually, I think it was at the town, one of the legislative town halls on Saturday. Clarity on access to the, the fields, et cetera, at Ben Ileson, if that closed. Evidently, that was a question in terms of Anderson, it was out there for families, whether they could go and use the playground or those types of things. So what do we know at this point in terms of that access to the, the grounds and facility?
Continued access to Ileson grounds after a potential closure?
Right. You know, there are fields and stuff like that.
Jay, do you have any comment on that?
So the building would go back to the Borough, we can always come up with an MOU to use if, you know, students want us to use the fields, we can come up with a MOU with the Borough if that's the direction that you want to go.
So I can build off that, because I was at the same town hall, and it was angst over Anderson Crawford, Anderson's facilities no longer being available to base families to use currently. And it might, it took a long time, they were saying, to mothball the building, and so there is currently some, some feelings around that, and they're worried that Ileson's footprint would similarly because, because it's borough property in the middle of a military installation, how that works.
So I'm not, I know we have an MOU with the Borough, and when we hand it back, they have an MOU with the military. So I'm not sure what their process is to hand that over. I think they have a lease, and I believe Anderson Crawford, that lease had expired, and I'm not sure that they renewed it. I, I don't know what the Borough has done, but potentially, I think the plan for the Borough is to hand it back to the military.
And I can certainly get with the Borough here in the next week and bring information back to the board on that as well to gain a little bit more knowledge.
Mr. Doran.
Again, Ileson, particularly at this point, and then I do have one on a broader impact. We talk about based access and post access, and post is a little bit, may, maybe different than base. But in terms of thought for parents who are, their duty is on the Air Force on the base, the nature of that, not able to leave for, if there's, they have to go pick up their child or such, you know, certainly if it's right there, it's a lot easier, more, I understand maybe more problematic, and this might be a conversation with the Colonel. More problematic in terms of, not the access, but onto the base, but getting off the base to get their child and get back. So I had, I had some questions that came up regarding that, that they, they can't leave their, their post, their duty.
And I don't, so there's some uniqueness in terms of maybe the military, but not so much in that other parents face those similar challenges in terms of their working lifestyle and conditions and when they have to be at work. One thing that I have heard that some people were nervous about is, there was a rumor out there that no transportation would be provided for Ileson students, and that's untrue. So certainly those parents that felt like their schedules didn't mesh with being able to drop their students off at North Pole Middle or North Pole High, their students would have access to transportation to those schools.
I lost my follow up. It'll come back to me.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. So maybe I'll start with the easier questions. I guess, I'm not sure that it is an easy question, but, you know, so looking at, just thinking about some of the feedback and questions we've already been getting from the public and including, you know, you know, people suggesting, well, hey, maybe instead of closing the school that my kids go to, close this other one. You know, in, in, in considering all of that and transparency to the public, I, I would really like to see more detail included in why schools were not considered. I appreciate the, the short summaries that are there, and, and I think they're useful and, and, but I think that it, it would be really great to have, you know, what I'm envisioning is maybe a table that has our five criteria, criteria on, criteria, excuse me, getting tongue tied, maybe some sort of table that has our criteria on it and then an explanation for each criteria. I don't know if that can result in a ranking list or something like that, but, but something to give the public a little bit more to build on and to understand, really that there was a, because I know there was a lot of work put into this process and into the consideration, and, and I just, I would like to be able to share more details with the public about that, if that's something that the administration could put together.
Potentially. Now, I hesitate saying yes on that table, because this was something that was debated at the administration level, whether or not to put a table together. And the danger in putting a table together to show like, this school checks three out of the five criteria versus this other school only checks one, the difference might be that one might push it over the edge of the other school in terms of it just not being a starter in terms of the conversation for closure. And so also objectifying it down to like some kind of number or metric wasn't something that we felt like we could get to. So try to leave it as open ended as possible in terms of the thinking that went into the schools on the shortlist that are before you. And so all to say is, you know, our team is still continuing to think about how to better message around the schools that are on the shortlist and providing you with information and recommendations. And so we'll think about that in the next week to see if there's some further clarity that we can bring to the table, and then if there's things between now and Monday or within the next month that you think of that could help with that, to let us know.
Can I follow up? Yeah, so, I mean, it doesn't have to be a table, that was just a, you know, that's where my brain goes. But, but just a little bit more detail, and I think specifically some things that might be helpful would include, you know, we have some costs of, or the, the amount of deferred maintenance, the dollar amount for, shared for some of these schools, but not for everyone. That might be helpful. Also, though, when we talk about deferred maintenance, some deferred maintenance, I assume is more critical than others. So understanding like which school needs it now or sooner and, and how expensive that urgent maintenance is versus, you know, I think that things like that might help. The other suggestion I would have is just including operating cost or potential savings for every school. Or, you know, sometimes you, sometimes that might be relatively small because you have other issues going on, right? But, so just, just kind of laying out a side by side comparison for those things that are, you know, very clear. And then, so that's, and if I come up with more ideas, I'll, I'll let you know for sure, but that's where I would start.
And, and I did want to mention that one of the resources we used and is at the board's disposal is the elementary school building information. That does have a lot of that information on it in terms of a side by side comparison. So I did want to point you in that direction, and I understand some folks had issues with links prior to the meeting, so I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks. So those are supposed to be links?
Yeah.
If you check your email, they sent you one with working links. I'm getting to Ms. Burnett, oh, go ahead. Sure.
I just wanted to say that we do have a spreadsheet that does show all the operation costs and also the two deferred maintenance, the capital improvement plans. We've got the six year, which shows the immediate needs within the six years, and then we've got the long term twenty years. So on the six year list, you'll see that those are the immediate needs that we need to do sort of sooner.
Okay, can I follow up on that?
Go ahead.
So I, I really appreciate that that's already something that exists. What I think is perhaps missing then is that the public needs to know, and it needs to be more obvious, I think, or I would, I would appreciate it if it could be shared more, more clearly with the public where they can follow up and find that specific information if they're looking for it. And, and a summary doesn't hurt. Thanks.
One second. Something that I would like added to that chart would also be which schools we have that currently have the bonds, like what the Borough provided, since that also pushes things to one edge or another and seems like public information. Ms. Burnett.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to kind of back that up, just because of phone calls that I took over the weekend and conversations that were said to me. There are many people, including legislators and assembly members, who are adamant that this, these closures are a political move and that we are trying to inferiorate people by doing this. And so maybe some clarity, something so that people realize that this isn't a political move, this is a we're in trouble move, and if we don't do something, it's going to be even worse.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a super interesting deflection that we would do this for political motive. You know, being the leader of this organization and my heart being with kids, I honestly wouldn't put any of us or any students through this if it was politically motivated. As I've been talking about for months on end, we have real fiscal challenges in front of us and no ability to raise our own revenue. So I take real issue with, not your statement, but people saying, any of this is politically motivated. With that said, I do think we have a ton of clear information. We have a thirty one page document in front of the board this evening and probably more information than anybody's gotten on school closure in the past. We will continue to try to provide clarity as we can, as, as we're working through it. But there is not a lack of information available for people in terms of our recommendations.
For the public, I will say that there were links and they didn't work for board members either, and now that we have access to those links, there are some pretty comprehensive documents that include all this information. And the insinuation that any of this would be done with a political motive is just patently false and shows people's misunderstanding of the dire situation that our district is in and the communication that Dr. Minor and his team has provided from the get go before schools were ever named makes that very clear, that this was in no way anything other than the reality of decade of flat funding. It was, if it's to this, I'll let you go, and then Ms. Maradi.
Absolutely. Just a quick follow up to that. Mainly, the reason I wanted that was so that those comments would be out there, so that we would make our stance clear here in a public session that, hey, this is not a political motive and all of us have the best interest of children in our hearts.
Ms. Maradi.
To say the opposite, and it might be because this is night and day from the last time we did this. We, we obviously learned a lot the last time. This is, again, night and day from how we did it before. The information that I was able to find in that thirty plus page document that we have going on right now is, is incredibly helpful. I think what might be even further helpful is to consolidate some of that information into a chart. So it's all there, it's just trying to find it piece by piece. I'm doing it right now on my own, so if you guys want to do that, that'd be great, but it is all there for those that need to find that information, you just have to dig around for it and kind of piece it together. But thank you, this is so much information and great plan, not a great situation, but it's, at least it's a plan this round.
Mr. Lopez.
I just had a quick question about the fundraising. So for example, if Ben Ileson were to close, if you're, for example, junior class fundraising, sophomore class fundraising, athletics, activities, funds, where would that money go at the end of the school year?
Has there been any conversations on club accounts and what would be done with club accounts?
So the last time we did this, the club accounts followed the students to the schools where they were going. So we divvied it up kind of based on the, the number of students going to each school. And with Ben Ileson, I would imagine that a very similar thing would do, so it would follow the students.
Thank you.
Mr. Doran.
I want to ditto what has been said about information on this one and the conversation that we're actually able to engage in on school closures, this go around, and we know it'll be ongoing for several weeks. I really wanted to appreciate the, the fact of it'll be ongoing for several weeks. I really wanted to appreciate the, the fact of having a shortlist, plus the administration's recommendations for the actual closures. And, and, but the shortlist opens up a little bit broader conversation, which I think is important and addresses the, the long term. I think what's really important for schools is to, whatever decision is made now is a long-term decision, not, okay, well, we're doing two this year and we're going to have to do two next year. And, you know, and we don't know all the fiscal future. But I think in fairness to those schools and programs, we've seen what it has to do with a program when you're on cut lists year after year after year and you just don't know what to do. And so I, I'm thinking in terms of that. The one on the shortlist, as mentioned, referenced earlier, that I do have some concerns about, and I think we need to talk about no schools on this list, just to get a reaction. But when I go through the four schools, I think some particular things stand out. For Pearl Creek, and again, I'm looking long-term with this. It's one of only two schools that is really on the other, although technically there's another one, but basically north of airport. When I think of Weller being, getting close to capacity and bringing more over, if we needed in terms of growth, that's a factor there. We just moved new students there, who, that's a factor. And I really appreciate that when you looked at the schools, you also said, we did a major thing that hit the Fairbanks area schools, and it makes sense to North Pole. And both groups of schools at various points in history have been over capacity. And now they're not. So the, I also think in terms of 400 students that need, Pearl Creek closed would have to go elsewhere. That's a very significant number and it's a good size for a school. And I'm going to put out there in terms of needing some room for expansion in the years ahead. It may be five years away, but I'm, I'm looking at, what if one of the charter schools closed? You know, they're getting pressured on finances. There are factors that, that could happen there. We've been very fortunate and we have very solid schools. And we've seen longevity with them, but I'm just trying to think, as we lost students out of, if I, generically speaking, neighborhood schools into charter schools, that's part of where we've gained space with four new buildings. Or if private school closed, you know, they've, I've worked with private schools, superintendent of one, and depends on the funding there from a different source. And we did wind up eventually closing that school. But where we have some give and take. So those are some of the factors. It's not so much of a question, but factors that I hope we, we consider. And, and so I'll leave that at this point there. And I've got another comment. Put me back in the queue.
Ms. Peterson?
Just talking to families today, both out at Ticasic Brown in Pearl Creek, wondering if the schools of choice or charter schools that have already closed their deadlines for lottery for the upcoming year, if there's any possibility of, I, I think Hutch has closed. I don't know if any of the other schools have closed. But I heard a couple of parents say, you know, I absolutely love my neighborhood school, but if it's going to close, I'd like to consider other options, charter magnet, schools of choice, and just wondering how we can share those deadlines and information with families.
So it's my understanding that the elementary charters are still all open, those lotteries. Hutch lottery may have closed.
Yeah, it actually was extended, so it's still open. They did an open house tonight.
Mr. Burgess?
Okay. I, I really don't like this question I'm about to ask because, because it's emotional. It's about, it's a, the question, so I'm, I'm asking this partly because we had some suggestions from the public, partly because I'm trying to think long-term. And, you know, knowing that we're, we're predicting to be in a, in a similar deficit situation in the next fiscal year. And that every time we close a school, it's disruptive to the community. We have to redraw boundary lines. We have to shuffle around kids. Is there any, I guess, what would the administration's position be on closing more than two schools this year? If, if it would have a positive impact on long-term planning? And again, I don't like, I don't like that it has to be considered, but I do feel like it's a responsible question to ask.
Yeah, I think it's a responsible question to ask and definitely a tough one to answer. And so my recommendation, or I guess response to that, is that there's certainly a lot of square footage available that we're currently maintaining in the school district with many schools under capacity. And so without ending, any kind of end in sight in terms of a real investment in education from the state, there's certainly room to close additional schools if the school board wanted to go in that direction. And, and if truly our main priority is to look at the educational experience of students and keeping a status quo, PTR, or investing back in other things, I do think it would be responsible for the board to potentially take a look at that this year.
Mr. Doran?
Added to my question. But I think the, I would seriously look at saying for Two Rivers, it is a great community. There's no question about that. My question really becomes, it's, it's come up before over the years. It's a small school. It's, I'm not exactly sure of the enrollment trend, but I think it's stayed about stable the last couple of years. I'm not certain about that. But it's still about 60%. There are already students who go to North Pole Middle from there and some who'd stay there for six, seven, eight. When we look at the busing, what does that mean for, for their ride to Weller? It adds to it, but I don't know how much. So we'll, I mean, I know we'll get that, I guess, next year or next week. But I think if the, if we are really looking at saying we're going to have to do something next year, that's, that's certainly, you don't want them hanging out there. And, and I know over the years, both Two Rivers and Salta has gone from principal to head teacher, you know, and cost savings. And there was real questions whether they would close or not. So I would just say, that's one reason I appreciate the shortlist, because it's better to do it now rather than dragging things out. With that in mind, and it's, I don't think it's something that really can be done this spring, but I think has to be part of that long-term planning, is looking at redistricting broadly. The, and it might be, and you're, you're thinking already now, but I, one of the things that I felt the last time through, we redistrict mainly for those students of the schools that were closed. There was a little bit of other pockets, but it wasn't a broad look. And it's been quite some time, I won't even say my estimate of how long ago, but it's been quite some time since we did a, a broad look at redistricting. And we may need to do that within the next year or so. Also, the conversation about restructuring. And maybe that's just doing options, et cetera. In the big picture, I am really concerned about the middle schools being so close to capacity. I was thrilled the way it worked out. At one point, they were almost all going to be at about 97, 98%. And I think even at one projection, we had 23 seats available in middle school. So they're close. And, and I think there will be a cycle. There will be some coming back, not to where we were. That's not in anybody's bellywake right now, you know, even 10 to 15 years down the line. So I just toss those out as something that I think we need to keep in that long-term planning. We have a relatively short timeline for making a decision on this. I am pleased with the level of conversation that is before us and already has taken place. So I think it's more quality time in, in these issues. And there's some different factors that are here now than the last go-around in terms of the schools that were closed last time. So you, it's not disparaging, but it's just different circumstances and, and what we have learned and where we're, we're trying to move forward.
Ms. Maple?
Wrong moment to eat a dry pretzel. Would the Two Rivers students, if Two Rivers were to close, would those students have the most significant transportation changes, like length of time for transportation changes?
Like, I mean, I guess we could look at, you know, the, the time they're on the bus going to like the actual Two Rivers school. But those, those students do go to, some of them who live in that area do go to North Pole Middle, and then all of them will eventually go to North Pole High as it stands right now. Now, if it was to be, like, we can look into it as far as like redistricting. Actually, Two Rivers is about equidistant between North Pole Middle and Tannenaw. So you could, like, it would be the same ride time. We'd be using the same route. We're just putting it at a different destination now. As far as ride time on, like, to the elementary school, it's really just going to depend on where they fall on Chino Hot Springs Road. If they're on this side of Two Rivers, going to Weller, it might be about the same as their ride time now. But if the closer they get to the school and they're on the other side of the school, obviously it'd be a shorter ride to, to Rivers. So it just, it's going to depend by student. Average ride time would be longer, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be outside the norm of, like, once they're in, like, the secondary level. That's the, the ride time we're, we would have for them anyhow going into North Pole right now.
Okay, thank you.
So falling on that, I know geographically, our borough is basically the size of New Jersey, which is enormous. And transportation cost does not take that into account for the listening public. We are just paid per student. So do we currently have students, I know, like, Salta students have a lot of commute and that's why we have the Salta school, but on the other side of town, the other outlying areas, we currently have students that have very long ride times to get into town.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We got, we have students in, you know, all directions that have, you know, really long ride times. We have students up on Haystack, students on the Steeze Highway, down the Parks Highway. So we, out of Murphy Dome. So it's just, it's just kind of the nature of having a, a big district and sparse population in some of those outlying areas.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Something that perhaps the Borough Resource Center, I'm mindful in terms of neighborhood transitions. And since I personally went through this, watched that, where Denali in 1990 had a very, very low population, lower than it is now. But what happened then at that low point is a lot of the homes were owned by people whose kids had been here and several of them moved out, started having families. They started buying their parents' homes. And so our neighborhood came back up to high numbers. It's been long enough, it's generational enough that, that has, you know, you're, you're getting some repeat of the old, the parents owning the homes. Kids might come back or grandparents who start saying, okay, I want to move, I want to downsize, I want to do those things. And I don't know if the borough does have some information on that or not. I'm just mindful of, as we, as we go through, neighborhoods do go through those, those cycles of their kids grow up and they're still in their home, but then they decide, no, they want to downsize or they want to move elsewhere. And younger families come in and so it grows. And again, trying to look at that long-term picture.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any neighborhood modeling from the borough, but that's something that I can reach out to them and ask. And one of the interesting parts that you talked about in there is younger families moving into those areas. And, you know, we've had this conversation in the past, unfortunately, a lot of younger families are moving out of Fairbanks and out of Alaska. And so even if they had the modeling, I'm curious to, you know, I would be curious to see whether or not that would play out, given the, the trend that we're currently seeing with young families.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to retract something I said earlier tonight because what happened is I, I scrolled down further in this document and I saw that you did include a school capacity table. I had forgotten it was there. That includes all of the schools. Earlier, I was just looking at the one that's focused on, you know, shuffling kids around, and I understand why it's trimmed. So as a public official who believes in accountability and I'm holding myself accountable, and I wanted to let you know that, that I caught my mistake there. And so thank you for providing all the information.
Well, and I greatly appreciate your recommendations to, to continue to push us to create more clear communications, because that's something that's really important to me. And so we'll continue to look at this and see how we can better communicate the recommendations we have before you.
And if I can just follow up on that, I do think you're doing a great job. It's just that when information gets in front of us, it often raises more questions. And so, so yeah, just, just an effort to, to really get all that together and help, help to summarize it in a way that's accessible to the public. I really appreciate the, the efforts here for transparency and, and public communication.
Okay. Well, thank you for the conversation around that. I'll turn the table over to you.
Mr. Doran?
Just a quick question, procedural for next week and certainly when you come down to the, having to make the final decisions on these. Various, obviously, we're starting to get emails. People are raising different questions, different suggestions, and some of them are supportive. They understand that this is needed or they would prefer not their school, but to get emails. People are raising different questions, different suggestions, and some of them are supportive. They understand that this is needed, or they would prefer not their school, but they understand why their school, or that we need to look at this. Is there a way, or is it a plan, part of the plan, to kind of address some of those questions as they come and then get them to the board? I'm trying to think that we could ask the questions publicly, but it's also, it might be time-saving and efficient to, as, as some of these come out, not all of them will be able to, but there might be some ways that the administration can kind of address them, so we do have that information and such.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, coming into tonight's meeting and wanting to hear the, the questions that board members have. The, a bit of the tricky part of that is, you know, with the information that's in front of you, we certainly think that we've provided a robust amount of information for the board, and the board is going to have a different understanding of this information than what the general public would. And so, there has been some talk about putting some FAQs together around it, like if we're starting to see the same question asked over and over again, that we could have that on a document that people can go to. I would say, if they're kind of one-offs, and it's really interesting to you, I might encourage you just to, to ask that question either in the meeting or via email, so that I know that's something that's very important to you, and we can be sure that we answer that question.
All right. And I'm comfortable with that, and I'm, and I'm thinking in terms of more, that come up several times. Great, thank you. That sounds good.
And then, one more plug for the community forums. I think that's a great place to, to come, ask questions, and participate in the process. And so, we'll have two community forums coming up that folks can participate in. All right. Now, I will turn it over to Sarah Gillum, and she'll provide a brief overview of activities for us.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Minut, for the opportunity. So, in terms of activities funding, I did give a handout to the members who are here, and we can certainly post that online too, if the community is interested. Schools receive, high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools all receive activities funding from the general fund. And then, each school does determine, within those funds that they are given, how to distribute those funds. There are certain limitations within that. You know, for example, they have to pay salaries and benefits from those activities funds. Additionally, they also prioritize paying for officials, for rentals, from those activity funds. And actually, when Niko and Michelle and I worked through this, each year from those general funds, just salaries, benefits, officials, and rentals consumes about eighty percent of the funds that schools are given at, at the secondary level. It's actually a little bit more at the middle school than it is at the high school, but I'll just use the high school, consumes about eighty percent of the funds that schools are given. So, there's very little left over from the general fund that schools are able to be discretionary with in terms of supplies, or equipment rentals, or, or maybe not equipment rentals, but equipment replacement, or repair that's needed. So, within that, we may talk about, and if, when you look at the budget book, you may see student activity sponsorship. That refers to the, the salary, salary, the stipend and benefits that are paid to coaches. Those stipends are based on an X-factor that's defined in the FEA negotiated agreement, and I attach the two pages to your document as well that includes those. From last year's, or the previous negotiated agreement to the current negotiated agreement, that X-factor saw about a twenty-five percent increase. So, as we're analyzing activity budgets this year, we will see an increase in the stipends and benefits that employees are paid, just simply because of that increase. And the amount that schools, that each coach is paid is a little different based upon what category they're from. So, I just wanted to say, another plug, that activities at our schools include so much more beyond just what you might think of as a traditional competitive sports team. So, when we talk about SAS stipends for different things, that includes all of our band, orchestra, and choir teachers. They receive a stipend for the additional duties that they do outside of the workday. Our JROTC instructors do an incredible amount of work outside of the workday. They receive a stipend. Additionally, in student government, we have an overall student government sponsor often, and then at each class level, there's a sponsor. So, I highlighted on the back of that document, the average cost each of those sponsorships has each year for the school with, between salary and benefits. So, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, sometimes we may think about sports, but really, activities in our schools is so much more beyond that. In addition to the SAS funds schools, so there's a lump sum that you can kind of see in the budget book that is SAS SDA that's given, and then there's also a per pupil multiplier that each school receives. So, they get, I think at the high school level, it's ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents per pupil as a multiplier for those additional funds that they're given. In addition to that, as Mr. Lopez noted, schools also have club accounts. So, in terms of the fundraising efforts that they do, the fees that parents pay for activities, schools also have club accounts that are a year-to-year account. So, those funds don't, aren't exhausted at the end of the year like general funds, that those carry on from year to year. So, as the freshman class raises funds, they're doing that, leading up to, you know, when they're seniors and what they're taking into consideration. So, those roll over year to year, and then the coaches, sponsors, and administrators maintain those accounts to make sure they're positive balanced. In addition to that, there's also a four ninety-nine district-wide activities category, and so, we do have some sports that we refer to as outsourced, which is a bit of a misnomer, perhaps. There's sports that continue to happen and are competitive within our schools. However, we pay, in some cases, a fee to an outside organization to administer those sports. So, they arrange and coordinate officials, help do the scheduling within that. They cooperate with the school to do the hiring of the head coaches, and we do pay a fee for them to do that. The school, however, does retain a lot of the administrative work too, though, I guess I should say. So, in terms of, they have to do eligibility checks for students for both the Alaska State ASA organization, as well as academic checks for the students. For coaches, they're also doing the ASA certifications and eligibility checks, and then also our district requirements in terms of checks within that. The other piece I just had is just that, for the past few years, we have also charged a two hundred and fifty dollar per activity fee to any homeschool students that are not associated with our school district. So, that is a fee that those students pay that is then deposited into the school club account piece, so they can use that amount. Schools can use that amount to help offset costs that they might have.
I think that's a general overview of that. If there's questions too, happy to take those. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. I have sent many emails over the past few weeks. I have picked through this like crazy. And I still have one question. So, I see on here, we have all these things that we cover stipends for and stuff, and hockey is not on there, which means that stipends are covered at the full cost by parents?
So, actually, hockey is an interesting one, because it is considered an outsourced sport in the sense that it is not paid a stipend from our district. But it also is a little different, because we don't pay an organization any fee to do those administrative pieces. And so, that change happened a few years ago, where we switched from hockey being like a school district-sponsored sport to it being kind of an outsourced sport.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
I'd be very interested in changing that and fixing it. As of right now, and not as a board member, but as a parent, I paid three thousand dollars for my son to play high school hockey this year for West Valley. And I know that people look at hockey as a sport that, well, if you can afford to pay it, cool, then you can play it. But if you can't, well, then you just don't play. And I know that there's many students, especially who attend Lathrop High School, who would love to play high school, high school hockey. And I know that what is preventing Lathrop from having a team is the demographics of that school. There's a lot of families who, they cannot afford to pay exuberant amounts for sports. And I think that if we could relieve some of that stress, especially through schools like Lathrop High School, that we could maybe make sports more equitable, and figuring out how to make hockey as a full-on high school sport again, like the rest of them are. And then I have something else after that.
We're going to go to Ms. Marotti.
Two questions. Is this document available electronically?
It certainly can be. I will get it to Ms. Richardson to upload to the website too.
Thank you. And my second question is, is there, is this where I could ask to add an SAS contract for the We the People and History Day responsibilities for our district for the FY twenty-five budget? Then I would like to do that. I don't know what happens after that, but that is something that I am incredibly hopeful that we can do.
Can you send me that in email form, just so I've got it?
Yeah.
And we can attach a dollar figure to it. And then, also to Ms. Burnett's question, certainly, so, right now, the conversations are around building a recommended budget. And so, as the board goes into building that budget, you certainly can propose investments at that time. What I'm wondering is, is would it be of interest to you, for administration, to look back historically to see what we provided for hockey and give you and the board that figure for consideration?
Absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
To address Ms. Marotti's concern, I think in the past, we've also had some compensation for like GSA sponsors. And the language that I think we've relied on in the past is under Roman numeral six, paragraph B, which allows building administrators to provide some compensation for like a GSA sponsor, or a We the People sponsor, if it's not on one of the ranges, and that is going to be a lesser time commitment. So, I do believe that there's some flexibility for what Ms. Marotti is suggesting under that paragraph.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Peterson. I just want to say that, in my little summary on this one sheet, those are just the known activities that we do. That doesn't include Model UN, Dungeons and Dragons, all of those other interest clubs and activities that people or schools sponsor. The other thing that isn't included in here would also be any assistant coach stipends that are paid at the school level. So, that is also discretionary based at the school level. The only one that is defined specifically is the head coach or the lead sponsor of any activity.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Another realm of interest for myself was sports. I would be interested in having our grants department, if this is something we're able to do, look at the possibility of maybe grants that are available for minorities and Native American students for sports, to be able to participate in any, any sport, whether it be football, hockey, music, decathlons, anything. I'd be interested to see if there'd be ways to make things like this more equitable as, you know, sports and co-curricular extracurricular activities, as I always say, promote really good student outcomes. And there's, they're really important. And if we could find a way to maybe pay for some, especially when it comes to our minorities and our Native Americans, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, I'll continue to pass that along to our grant writers. Our grant writers are well-aware of my love for student activities. And so, that's something that's on their radar in terms of looking for that information. But yes, I'll, I'll continue to remind them to, to look for those grant opportunities.
Mr. Burgess?
Just kind of building out on that concept, I recall a conversation with the We the People Coordinator at West Valley, where they, students had, had explored the question of how to make activities and sports more equitable. And one idea that they, students came up with was to look at students who qualified for free and reduced lunch, and make sports free or reduced for them as well, or other activities. So, if that's something that would be, you know, doable, I would, I would love to explore that.
Yeah, so that's a great point to make. And, you know, the piece that isn't really captured in this, of course, is the fee, like Ms. Burnett referenced, in terms of that students have to pay for that. So, I always, as a school leader, and I know other principals do this, spoke to students about, and coaches too, especially, I think they're, and sponsors are the biggest people to carry this message, that if students ever have a difficult time paying for those fees, to reach out to the school administrator, because that was something that we dealt with regularly in terms of working with families of what they could afford, or how we could work through sponsorships in different ways, whether that was through the school of helping to offset those costs. I know, from my experience, I often had parents who were always willing to help any students that they found out a need. But certainly, that does exist, maybe not in a formalized way, but in an informal way, that schools carry that message forward to their activities.
Mr. Doran?
Two questions. One is in terms of the outsourced sports. Typically, are they within the allocation, you know, with their contract, but the, is the dollar amount within the, the allocation of the ranges of comparable sports, even though we outsource them?
No, I would not say.
Do they save us money? Do they cost us money? Cost more, does it cost the school more?
It saves us considerable, a considerable amount of money to outsource. In some instances, for some of these outsourced sports, the coaches are completely voluntary. And so, if we were to return out of outsourced, it would be more from the general fund to support these activities.
And then, my other question related to this area is, in terms of the conversation that was going on just before, these are activity options, basically, and I think we've, each school, they, they have an allocation. They divvy it up the way they want. And I believe that one of the reasons development of getting, kind of getting ranges is because each person came in and negotiated how many hours. And that could vary greatly from school to school. Oh, I want to do practices seven days a week. And somebody else, no, we're going to do it three days a week, or whatever. And so, there was a great variability within that. So, I think the ranges were a good move in that direction. But, but basically, the question of whether we have to add money, it, it falls within each school. You get X amount, and I think ninety-some dollars, I don't have in front of me, but I think you mentioned earlier, per student for that school. And then, and I know elementary is less than that, but you get it per student. You figure out how you want to divvy it up, and you may or may not be able to offer as many activities as you would like. You might have to prioritize. And that's where we've been able to do. At each level, the, you know, different offerings, things come up. When each sports first came, it wasn't on the list. It's relatively a new addition, but they were able to, to try it and, and start going. And, but I think that's an important thing, that, that flexibility within the, for each school to say, you know, yes, we can run a football team. Another school says, no, we can't. We're going to do a hockey team, or we're going to combine. And, and I think, especially as we're, we look at more schools, just because of numbers of students also doing combined teams, so.
I just want to make one comment on that, in that this list is negotiated with FEA, so there's not a lot of flexibility. And I don't think hockey currently is on that list, given the board's vote two or three years ago to not fund hockey any longer. So, just wanted to be, be clear about that. So, I, I think if the board wanted hockey to return, that, that might take board action, and then certainly, potentially, some budgetary line items that go with that.
Ms. Peterson?
I, I think hockey is still listed as a range eight sport. We didn't take it off when we negotiated last. And just to follow up, the X-factor was increased, as noted. It was previously fifteen dollars and change. And so, the X-factor, when we negotiated the last agreement, was set at twenty dollars per hour, roughly. The X-factor is twenty dollars, which was in par with the rest of the state. It, it's really hard to ask somebody to give of time when their high school students are earning more or as much as they are. So, I, I don't want to suggest that the X-factor really covers the amount of time that a lot of these coaches give, especially if they're traveling. especially if they're traveling across the state. But just so the, the public is aware, the X factor is set at twenty dollars. So I know twenty-five percent increase sounds like a lot. But if you sat down and did the math and figured out how many hours you coached and supervised students traveling and what have you, it's, it's actually far less than that.
So thank you for, thank you certainly for that. Yeah, coaches are not paid enough for the work that they do, nor are any other educators in our school district. Thanks for the clarification. Hockey is on range eight, so I stand corrected for that. In terms of offering hockey, though, it would be helpful from administration to have consensus or some kind of board action to say that we would want to begin offering hockey again, given there was a clear board vote, in my memory, that had the district move away from providing funds for hockey.
Seeing nobody else, I'll add myself. Something that I actually brought up back when I was campaigning, and this was being discussed. Anchorage does an activities fee, and then it's charged every single student regardless of whether or not they participate in a school sport. And then it's capped per family. So that is a maximum contribution, and that supports all activities. And then divvied up, and Anchorage is currently zeroing out all their activities, to be aware of that too. But that might be a way to allow us to support more activities. It's one more thing passed on to families, and that shouldn't be done lightly. But if we're saying that we prioritize activities for students, even with a really low budget, it is something the board could consider that other districts do do. Another thing that I've, I, I think it was in an email, and I've also seen it in comments online, people asking why we pay ASA a fee, and thinking that we shouldn't do that. And I think there's confusion around ASB and ASA. And so it would be great if the administration addressed why exactly we have to pay that fee.
Yeah, so I can address that. To compete in regional or state competitions, schools have to be paying member schools. And so that's why we, we pay that fee to ASA.
So leaving ASA would mean we could no longer compete in the state?
That's correct.
Okay. Just for the public to be aware. And then the other thing, and it's going to seem like it doesn't connect, but I promise I will bring it back around. Going, I, I spent a lot of my weekend doing a lot of this. And I went through every single page of our budget book. And something that I noticed, that I had heard from Dr. Minor in other conversations, was we currently have students who have been suspended or expelled have to take assessments. The board members would know, because we've gone through these things, drug and alcohol assessments as a requirement to reentry into our program. And Dr. Minor can speak to this, but we've been told by attorneys and also other school districts that no one else does that, and that it's a not smart practice.
That's correct. And so without, without strong consensus objection, that's something that the, the administration would potentially look for going forward in next year. That, and I want to be careful of the way I say this. Looking at specific reentry for students, there may be still some violations that we want to require an assessment for. But in general, not have this blanket statement that an assessment is needed in every case. And that could certainly provide quite a bit of savings for the school district in the tune of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. And then on the side of that, outside counsel also recommending that we don't just have blanket assessments for students. Because oftentimes, what comes back in assessments can't actually be followed through in the school environment. It's more outside of the school. And so why are we paying for this assessment for things that we can't utilize within the school environment?
So like I said, I bring it back around. So now it makes sense with a different conversation. When I brought that up, first it was just, hey, why are we paying money for this if we know it's not a great, a great use of our resources? A, a big part of these assessments, I believe the intention is to help students grow and learn and be able to reintegrate. I am a firm believer that having a robust activities and ways for students to feel connected to their school community stops students from maybe getting in as much trouble where they might be suspended or might want to use illegal substances. So it might, my, my view would, this would be a great place to shift that money to providing more, more money towards our activities and allowing our, our students. And specifically targeting it for students whom, making somewhere in there a way for students who might not be able to afford or access as many activities, be able to access some of that funds and being intentional about it. Ms. Burnett.
I'd absolutely be in favor of that. I actually kind of really like that idea. Though, I would just put a heat of caution out there that maybe we develop something that would go along the lines of anything that was maybe dangerous. A student that maybe proposed a threat or danger to students, those would be the ones that we still went ahead with the assessments with. And I know that's pretty much common sense, but yeah.
Yeah, and to the wider public that might not know, there is a robust process necessary for a student to reenter our program. It is not, you take an assessment and now you're back in. It is always a board decision where the consideration of exactly what happened and the growth is considered. So this is just one piece that has been our past practice. And we have received advice that this is not a good past practice, and we are probably not getting our money's worth in requiring these assessments. Mr. Doran.
Yes, this, an ongoing conversation has been there when we put them in, and, you know, where the board and the district put them in. So I think that moving towards a more judicious requirement makes sense. Interest peaked when you said, eh, this might be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, because I know the costs have gone up, and it's one of the reasons why the district, if we're going to require, we have to pay it. At one point, there was like, no, we're not, but no, we do, are. So fifty to a hundred thousand, I just want to move into a potential that it could be, in fact, for next year. Our budget pool, that, you know, how we allocated, whether it's PTR, whether it's activities, whatever, you know, to raise that allocation rather than any individual sport. I mean, that would be something, but just something to, I'll add to my budget pool. Thank you. And that's not a swimming pool, if anyone didn't listen last week. It's a pool of money that could be used.
Are we done with activities? All right, can we move on to ELP?
Okay, thanks for the robust conversation around activities. It is one of my favorite topics, so I feel like I could have talked about that one for a couple more hours. But we'll give it over to Kate Hall to talk about ELP.
So speaking of Mr. Doran's pool, during discussion of the pool during the last work session, it was suggested that the significant cuts that are in the proposed budget for, for ELP, would there be an opportunity for those to potentially be deeper if we wanted to spend money in a different way? So I was asked to look at what the state requirements are around our gifted program, and just wanted to give you some information about that to do with what you will. So we currently serve about five hundred and seven, not quite five hundred and seventy students between third and eighth grade in our gifted programs. Those are split almost fifty-fifty between elementary schools, including our K eights and middle schools. The service at each of those schools is different. In the elementary grades, it's a pullout service. At the middle school, it is an elective class. And so virtually all, unless their parents have said, don't do it, elementary kids who qualify for ELP do in fact participate in the pullout program. At the middle school, not all students who are eligible choose to participate. So at the middle school, most kids only get, you know, one, maybe two electives. And oftentimes, we're competing with music, or we're repeating, competing with a STEM class or foreign language or something, and kids will choose to take, take something instead of their ELP class, or they'll do ELP once out of their six semesters at middle school. We also have a primary enrichment program that serves grades one and two, prior to the age of being eligible for ELP, that are invitational and only happens in second semester. So that's kind of a general overview of what the program looks like. We submit a plan of service to the state every year. Our plan of service in Fairbanks was last written in 2020. And we have historically submitted those as five-year plans. But there is no requirement from the state that those be dated. And we can adjust our plan and resubmit it at any time. So even though ours doesn't expire for another year, we're allowed to update the plan how, how we choose to. And I will tell you that our plan of service, as long as I have been aware of it, is extremely robust and is well beyond what is required for, by statute. So under statute, what is required is that we have a mechanism for student identification, that we have outlined student eligibility criteria, that we have a process for the development of a student learning plan, and that there's a review process if parents disagree with an eligibility decision. So those are the four things that we're required to do. Right now, you know, things that could potentially be adjusted if we chose to within that is within student identification. We currently have universal screening at third grade. We do that actually twice a year. So we screen all third graders as they sit in their classrooms in the fall. And then again, in the spring, if we've had, we tend to be a bit of a transient community. If we've had new students enroll over the course of the school year during their third grade year, there's another opportunity in the spring for that group of kids to be universally screened. So there is no statutory requirement for universal screening. There's great reasons to do it, but it's also expensive and time consuming. So that's within student identification, that's one area that could potentially be adjusted. Our eligibility criteria, we could determine how wide a net we choose to cast in that. And so there is no, again, statutory requirement for certain levels of eligibility criteria. Again, there's excellent reasons for, oh, I just made my screen go away. Excellent reasons for our criteria to be what they are in terms of access and equity in those, and best practices. But those things can, can be adjusted if necessary. The development of student learning plans, we do student learning plans currently. But those student learning plans tend to include that pullout service or that elective service that we don't, that part of the statutory requirement isn't there. And then the review process, it's just the review process. I don't know that there's any ways to really adjust that. So in the proposed budget currently, what we were looking at was discontinuing the ELP electives at middle school to mirror what our service plan says about high schools, which is essentially that those are served through the variety of elective activities that are available at those levels. So at our middle schools, we have STEM classes, we have art classes, we have music classes, we potentially have foreign language classes, we have leveled math. Depends on the school, depends on the year, but kids can have enrichment in, in that way at the middle school. And then we look to adjust our elementary teachers to serve up to four schools each, so it would be four teachers. We could do that with minor adjustments to the current service plan. And I, I have some outline proposed schedules and that sort of thing that were developed last year when we were looking at this. And potential consideration for semester or quarter-based plans, and a potential for discontinuing the PEP program, the primary enrichment program, sort of depending on, on what the group were to determine there. And so if the board would like to consider reducing ELP FTE lower than that four, I think there are possibilities to do that. We would have to be sure that we're continuing to have a plan that meets those four points of the statute. But we certainly could include and consider some of those changes I had discussed, looking at making use of class differentiation, content acceleration as appropriate. And those types of things are not out of line with other service plans within the state. So again, there's excellent reasons to be doing what we are doing, but there, there is room for adjustment within what we're currently doing. I don't think that we would be able to meet those four points in statute with no FTE, because we would still have to have a, a process for making students eligible and writing eligibility plans that I would not really feel comfortable putting on general education teachers at this point, given what, what's continuing on their plate. But I think it could be done with, with minimal staff potentially.
So I've got one first. I believe I read the plan last year. And in it, it also says that you're providing some kind of services to students identified at charters?
I will tell you, I don't have the ELP plan of service committed to memory. I can, I can certainly look at that.
So from my understanding, from when I read it, it was like that there would be a project, like once a quarter or something, that students identified. And I also, no surprise, charter school, um, I know my students have never been tested. And I don't believe that we've been doing testing of students at charters, and I'm not sure about the magnets for Barnett.
And, and again, I think that comes down to the fashion in which the charter schools are funded. So if a charter school is choosing to have an ELP program or to have ELP staff, then that would be, that would be possible.
And our current housing of ELP is underspent, though, and it's recognized as a special education-ish service by the state, or not at all?
It is not recognized as a special education service by the state. In our district, we house it in special education, in my understanding, based on history. When I first started in the school district, ELP students got IEPs, much like special ed students. I think it was actually done on the exact same paperwork. But under federal law, they are, they are not together whatsoever. It sort of still lives with us out of history, but is not a special education service by definition. It's just under our department umbrella.
Ms. Peterson.
This one's near and dear to my heart. I was an ELP teacher at, at Tannenah for five years. And I, I know that Kate has some difficult decisions to make along with the school board. I, I think it's possible for classroom teachers to really differentiate instruction to some degree for those gifted students. Of course, as PTR goes up, it becomes more and more difficult to differentiate. The one thing that I'd like to share about gifted students is that they are often very high-functioning academically and have greater needs with SCL. Sometimes they're the most fidgety, less mature students that really have a hard time focusing. They're also a subgroup that has some of the highest suicide rates. So if, if I had to advocate for putting something back and taking something off the, the table, it would be maybe not investing as much in the PEP program in those grades one and two, and somehow connecting with those middle school students, even if it was for a quarter, even though there may be STEM or other elective programs that they have. There's something magical about getting those gifted students together in a classroom for a quarter and addressing some of their non-academic issues.
Nobody else, then I'll jump back in. Thank you for that, Ms. Peterson. ELP is near and dear to me, too. I, I was a driving factor in putting it back in our budget last year. I received, it was GT Services back then, but now it's called ELP. Here as a student, I can tell you, it fundamentally changed my life. Like Ms. Peterson said, oftentimes, there's twice exceptional students. So while I struggled to read, I remember being tested. I remember Mr. Ernst going to bat for me at Ann Ween and being like, actually, don't test her on academics, test her on creativity. And getting in that program and going to Tannenah, and that was where I made some of my lifelong friends. That was the first time I ever felt like I found a community. So that should not, like, we're making tough decisions. But I can tell you, it, it definitely made a huge impact in who I became as a person and the trajectory of my life. I credit to getting to be in Mr. Gray's class at Tannenah Middle. I wasn't identified until sixth grade. It, it does make a difference to students. And oftentimes, those students might be achieving very high in some places, but they do struggle in lots of others. And I don't, I, I, I was not the most well-liked person in elementary school. I was an awkward and socially inept child. And ELP, like Ms. Peterson said, really helped me learn to become someone who could figure out society. And oftentimes, we're not identifying those students. I wouldn't have qualified for an IEP in any other way. Now, I mean, I've shared it with lots, I'm diagnosed with autism, but that wasn't till I was an adult. There are students who get served through that program. So I am in favor, like Ms. Peterson says, of maybe not focusing on our youngers, but focusing on the students in that older section that really need that help and some of those wraparound services that would not naturally qualify for an IEP, but are able
wraparound services that would not naturally qualify for an IEP, but are able to receive some of that help. I think most teachers will tell you, and if we ignore those kids, they also generally become our behavior problems in our classrooms because they do end up being more bored and trying to find ways to entertain themselves and often through the annoyance of their classmates. Sorry, that was my soapbox for ELP. It is something that I would like to preserve, but I also know we can't have everything we want in this budget. So I encourage, we've been getting a lot of emails. If you have a student who is in these programs, we need you to advocate to your legislators that this is another reason why we need funding. The state doesn't provide us extra funding for ELP. And it is a valued needed program, just like band and orchestra inside our schools and all the rest of it, but we're no longer able to afford what we've been able to afford. So we have to get more funding. Now, get off my soapbox. Mr. Doran, was that a hand?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that analysis, because I think it's really helpful. When I raised the question last week, putting it in my budget pool, it's to have the conversation. And there are, as I said even then, that if we would decide to do this and even with the cut that's in the budget, but add, even add to that, that it should go on our priority return list, that if we get funding from the state, we get, as you said, unfortunately, we can't do everything. And larger classes doesn't help those individual kids as well as all the others. I think it is really important, as our conversation even about activities is there, that some of those have developed because they are attractive to the students who need those outlets, those opportunities, whether it's, you know, various talents or whether it's academic. I mean, one of the things I love about academic decathlon is you really get a broad range. The other thing that I'm noticing and just thrilled with, I think it says so much for the teachers and principals and individual schools with the support staff, the efforts to do the walk to read cross grades is really helpful to those kids who are moving ahead. And sometimes it's in reading, sometimes it's in math, and schools are making accommodations within that. So I think one of the concerns that I have with ELP, as we keep cutting it back, wherein, are we really doing it effectively? And can we get something that maybe means smaller classes that, but within those, have that capability where we can meet some of those student needs? And if the state would fund it, would fund public education, then we can do more. But right now, we're going to see continued cuts in services. So definitely, the conversation, this is helpful in my thinking and processing it. I do see some reduction there unless we can really have a more vibrant, productive ELP program. And as we did last year, we were able to put back ELP because of funding available to us. I'm hopeful we will get there again this year, along with other things that we really need to do.
Anyone else on ELP?
Okay, well, that concludes at least administration's talking points for this evening. So just really want to thank the board for their willingness to dig into these difficult conversations. As has been noted, everything that we want to potentially invest back into takes a trade off on the other side. And so I know that's really, really a difficult conversation to have. I appreciate the feedback in terms of what to bring forward next time. That's very helpful. For our work session next week, we'll be covering custodial, North Star College, and then school closure again with an emphasis on transportation and then bringing back some of the elements from tonight. If you've got other questions between now and Monday, please reach out with those and we'll try to include those in some of the answers that we provide during next week's work session as well.
Mr. Doran?
The transportation report on this agenda is going to move to next week. We didn't get into, we tangentially touched upon transportation, but is that?
Yeah, we'll do a real deep dive in transportation attached to school closures next week. If you're looking for additional transportation information outside of school closures, let's connect and maybe we can bring that back as well.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to check since that was one we didn't really get into tonight, but was on the list, so, okay, so I'll be next week. If I might put out there again, I'm working on my pool, I got another $10,000 that I'm going to suggest we take out of school board travel, particularly the NSBA. I think it's a wonderful thing, but I'm going to put it on the table as something that we put in the pool.
Was there anyone else? So I have something to add to your pool, Mr. Doran. Don't come at me, guys. I went through the entire budget, like I said, and I had conversations, Dr. Minor, about some other ones, but the two that I felt confident bringing up tonight was the assessments. And then also, at North Pole Middle School, we currently pay 50K to rent Westcott Pool. And then we pay one full FTE for a pool attendant, but we no longer have that at any of our other schools. So I would like us to consider equity-wise, why we are funding swimming at one middle school when Ryan and the rest, we used to have it at more places. It's not that I don't believe that that's a valuable and great program and we need more kids knowing how to swim. And if some of us who have younger kids, I know we've done the quickly, how quick can we enroll our kid in a swim lesson, rodeo? But that seems like close to probably 100K that, and it's a whole extra FTD when I looked at the balances that that school has that other schools of similar size don't. Ms. Burnett?
Question to that. Are students at Ryan no longer walking over to Hemi to take swim classes or anything like that?
Yeah, that's correct. And this question came up today, and I don't know how long ago that that went away in the budget, but that certainly did. And I think prior to my arrival in the district, so I think it's been more than four years that that's been the case.
So that, can I have a follow-up real quick?
Yeah.
Are we also not offering swimming in high school then, or are we still offering swimming in high school?
Swimming's a sport, not a thing that they do in gym class.
So they're offering it as a type of class or anything like that? Okay.
Mr. Doran?
Just a little bit of information on that. That was a borough decision to charge, they didn't use to. And why Ryan, it was basically a lack of swim teachers and logistics of it. They had, it was more problematic at Ryan, et cetera, and they didn't have a swim teacher. They, a couple of years, they weren't able to get one. And so when the, the borough decided they were going to charge per student, that was one of the things, wasn't, they could use the money better and the time better. But for North Pole, it really was a strong community thing and they did have a swim teacher who was available and they've been able to work that. So I would say that one of the things we can ask is that the borough not charge students. But it's also having student teachers, or swim teachers.
Yeah, it was brought up that maybe we can negotiate with the borough, and I would be comfortable with that. It was, if we're looking at cuts, and as an educator reminded me, no cut should be off the table, we should be looking at all of them this weekend. That seems like one that we could get at for equity-wise and also one that could easily be brought back if funding did come through. It's not something that isn't restorable. Yeah, Dr. Minor?
Thank you. One final comment that might be helpful leading into the development of the recommended budget, given the pool is growing. And I just want to make sure that I've captured all of the things in the pool. If you could email me those list of items and if other board members have items as well, I want to make sure that we've got accurate costs out of each of those and then we can start building the tool that the board will use come the week of the 18th, so you can see those dollar amounts lined up with everything else that we have in proposed budget.
Great, will do.
Thank you.
And thank you for people chipping into the pool.
Anything else, guys? Seen none, we are adjourned.